Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the singing of Oh Canada.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons come and. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keeper and glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Parker of attendance, Linda, you're good there? Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? And approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? Councillor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. I have one, your worship, on the 110th Army Cadets. I'll be bringing up.
I'm gonna do 11A, I'm gonna put Army Cadets.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Councillor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship. Vivian Murphy, please.
Thank you. Okay, that'll be 11B. Okay, I'm looking for an approval of the agenda with the changes, please. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minutes, Town Council, February 18th, 2016.
Still moved?
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Town Council, February 25th, 2016.
Still moved?
Moved and seconded?
Question?
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, March 3rd, 2016. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And Town Council Special Meeting, March 4th. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question?
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Business arising. External staff review. Councillor Landau, that's on yours.
Thank you, your worship. Just a very quick item. I'd like to make a motion that the Yarmouth Town Council reaffirm its direction to staff to undertake an external staff review and that the request for proposals be issued no later than March 31st, 2016. And the reason I'm moving this, your worship, this matter's been on the table for some time. I know we've put a little note there that I know we've been involved with other matters. But the mandate of this council is coming to a quick end. We're gonna be done in probably six months. Some of us around the table may not be here. And I think it's incumbent that this council do at least a staff review because we've had the opportunity to work with staff for four years. And some of us even longer. And I think it's an important thing to get this moving, so that is my motion.
Thank you, your worship. I'm gonna be supporting the motion, but I would like to make an amendment to that motion if it's permitted.
Go ahead.
And my amendment, if it's okay with the mover and the seconder. I would like to move an amendment to that that will add the following wording. And that the recommendation from the request for proposals be brought before the May 12th, Yarmouth Town Council meeting as an agenda item. I so move.
Moved and seconded on the amendment. What? Say that again?
The motion? And that the recommendation from the request for proposals, that's after the request goes out?
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, okay. After the request goes out, they have ample time to come back and bring it back to council.
Okay.
I'm gonna give this to Linda, then she can.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are...
Need to vote on the proposed amendment.
We're discussing the amendment first, right? Okay. Deputy?
The motions are asking... Are asking for a third party to come in to do a review of our staff situation. And I respect that. That request for proposal could cost as much as $25,000 to $50,000. Beyond that, if we did decide to, did agree to that, that that company would come into the shop, into the office here, and probably spend another $25,000 to $50,000 of time by the staff in interviewing, et cetera. From my observation over the past three years, I think that our current administration has done an effective, a wonderful job actually, of reacting to change in the marketplace. I... I just feel that, as Ken has suggested in his motion or as part of his wording, indicated that he wants to do this in spite of... He knows the hardships that the administration has worked under the past two months, for sure. But even over the past two or three years, as we've changed activity in the planning department and other areas, we're sharing more with the municipal units. I'm not sure that this is a good move on the part of our current council. Probably could add more, but I think I'm okay for now, your worship.
Good, thank you. I want to turn the light off, deputy. Thank you. Councillor Mooney?
Well, I'm gonna disagree with the deputy mayor, but all you have to do is, and you see some people here in the audience, Jim, over the last, their deputy mayor over the last couple of months, who spent $94,500 for testing for the Lake George property. $30,000 bringing the stuff out there. $11,000 to spread it. And untold thousands to clean it up. Maybe if we had an external audit, we might not have had the problems to begin with. So I think it's a positive step. You see it happening right across the province, right across Atlanta, Canada. And it's not a tool to belittle, hurt, point fingers. It's actually a tool to, hate to say this word, but move forward. I think it's a positive thing. It's a positive reinforcement on how you, what you do with your resources, how you spend your money, and what you do with your staffing. And I can only see it enhancing what we already have in place. I know Jeff and Jerry, over the last year, there's been some troubles staffing-wise. I know, especially when it comes to budgetary items, not saying the budget itself, but preparing the budget and giving it to us. We have some troubles there. So that might be one of the points that the external audit says that. Maybe you might need some more help in the finance department. But I think we've already passed the motion here a few months ago. And I think it's just an enhancement of what the citizens expect to have for government services in Yarmouth.
Thank you. Councillor Landau?
And just to respond to Deputy Mayor MacLeod, the intent of this is not negative, as Councillor Mooney put out. It's inefficiency. It's a positive. To my knowledge, we have never, never had an external review. I could be corrected, but I don't believe it's ever happened for a number of years, not while I've been around. In an external review, we're a growing community. I'd like to think that, even though our population is shrinking, we are growing in other areas. And I think the review is intended to make sure that we have the right people in the right place. And to make sure that we have enough people in the right place to do the right things for our residents. And that's the intent of it. I'm hoping that we're gonna come out of this with a good, positive outlook. And furthermore, some very solid recommendations. I question the deputy mayor's $100,000 total for this thing. I don't know where that is coming from. He mentioned $25,000 initial, and then 25, and then 50. In my math, it works out to be $100,000. And conversation with Digby, and conversation with Claire, who've gone through this. Conversation with Kings County, who've gone through this. In conversation with other towns. The mayor is chair of town caucus, so she's obviously talked to her colleagues. I don't think nowhere it's near that figure. I think you're probably looking realistically, probably in the 25, 30 figure, but it's an RFP process. We have the right to turn down an RFP. This motion is to reaffirm the motion and to get the thing moving. Digby and Claire, the municipality district of Digby, Linda Gregory, and the municipality of the district of Claire, the warden there, both of which have indicated they're more than willing to share their RFPs with them, with us. So the skeleton is there. It's just a matter of going and putting the RFP out, I think. So I would like to see it out, and I'd like to see it started, so that it's done within the mandate of this council. So that's the intent of the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. When this was first brought up, I personally said, I'm used to this in the business climate that I came from. I'm fine by it. The timing right now, I question. And also, correct me, anyone, anyone around the table, correct me if I'm wrong. But this was specifically, this point was covered under the CAO's report not too, too long ago. And I do believe, CAO, that you also addressed that in person verbally. Timing right now, I just started to write these down, and I know, I know I have not, I have not got them all together. But we're dealing with Lake George, we're dealing with the airport, the ferry. We've got that time crunch. We have businesses, large businesses, that we're hoping and expecting to come to Yarmouth. Our downtown Main Street is, it's not just one project, it's a number of projects that we're looking at. Let us first get that business done. We've got a lot of plates that are full. I'm all right with this, as I was before. It is the timing that I, that I won't, I won't give my yea to. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. Well, I have all the faith in Jeff and his staff that they can multitask one or two things at a time. I know some people can do three things at a time. I disagree with Councillor Dawes. There's never a perfect time for lots of things. But this is one perfect time, this is it. This is nothing that we've said that we were going to do. But now we gotta stop because of what's taken place with Lake George, or the downtown, or the revitalization, or the ship coming, or the reconstruction of wallpaper and new carpets and everything. That's got nothing to do with anything. What it's got to do with is just to find out what the, what is happening in the office, what's happening in Public Works, where things are needed, where things are not needed. I mean, that's part of the report. We're not on a witch hunt. We're not on a witch hunt to fire people, I think, or anything. We're looking at how we can improve the betterment of the workforce in the town of Yarmouth. We have very capable staff. We're not, we're not, I'm not suggesting that the staff is not capable. They do great work, they do good work, and they do multitasking work. And that's why the CEO is sitting where he's sitting, and that's why he's a CEO. And that's why he hires the staff that he hires. They're all good staff, but there's nothing to say that there's experts that can come in and say, you know, there's probably a better way of doing this. And you either take the advice, or you don't take the advice. That's all it is. And it's, we're not reinventing the wheel here. They do it mostly everywhere, big corporations. We're almost close to an $18 million budget a year. It's warranted, it should be done, and I recommend that you vote for it to get it done.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna weigh in here. I agree with everybody, basically. First of all, the wording of this, we've had a couple different renditions of what we're calling it. It's, I don't know that I'd call it a staff review as such. It's an organizational review to see, to see how things function, as opposed to individual staff. So that needs to be clear. The second piece, and probably perhaps to me the most important, is that we have no terms of reference. And we need to know what we're asking these people to do. So I'm gonna ask you, if you don't mind, and if I'm off-base, by all means. But we need a terms of reference. You can't go forward to an RFP unless you know exactly what you're asking for. And you just can't call it an organizational review and say, do an organizational review. We need to know exactly what we're after, and that needs to be written out in a terms of reference. Which, and maybe you can even give us a date on that, if that's the way we should do. Because I don't think the timing is right either, but... Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. So as, as we know, there have been some done in this end of the province. And so I do have in my files a copy of the RFP document, the terms of reference, that was put out by the town of Digby a few years ago. And so as a starting point, we can use that. I would do it a little bit different, but it's not, it's a pretty good starting place. And probably with a little bit of, a little bit of work, clarification on the wording, it can be suitable for our purpose. So really, if we want to, if we want to push ahead with this, the date, certainly the first date of March 31st is not out of, out of line. The May date for the council meeting, probably okay. If we provided like three weeks' time for people to get their responses in, that would give us time to score the responses. Obviously, with an RFP, it's not simply based on price. You're looking at experience and expertise and level of effort and the approach they would take, and so on. And so it's a little more involved in terms of making that recommendation. But given that we have six weeks between the issue deadline that's proposed and the recommendation deadline, I don't see that it's not possible to do. We can certainly do that, but it will, in the next couple of weeks, to get the terms of reference finalized and ready to go, that will take, that will take some work, but we can get it done.
Okay, so... So I'm not going to support this motion as is. We have to vote on your amendment, which according to the CAO, and he has to get the work done, is, is a good date. That's a good date, to bring forth the recommendations, okay? That's what you were after, all right? So, okay, so that's, so that's good. And then, so let's vote on that first. I'm okay with that piece. And then when we go backwards to Ken's motion, maybe we can change a few words to make sure that we got the terms of reference in there, okay? Because we need to know what we're after. Okay, so are we all, do we all understand we're voting on the May, the May meeting, which the CAO indicated is a good timeframe? Yep, no, that's good. I think we all, does anybody not understand what we're voting on now? Okay, it's the amendment for May, for the recommendations, okay? Can I have a call for the question? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion, motion carried, one nay? Good, okay. So the next one, and it was moved and seconded. So I guess if the mover and seconder are okay, go ahead, councillor.
Well, I'm just getting a clarification, maybe from Linda here. The previous motion, and I, when I crafted this, that we originally passed...
I had that too.
What, what, what was the exact, no, like eons ago, on the external, was it called an organizational review or a staff review? And I wasn't sure on that either, and I didn't have a chance, I didn't have a chance. I think the intent of the motion is, is that an external review team would come in, they would meet with all the staff, review their positions, and come in with a study. And as long as that is, and recommendations. And they're gonna come back and say, you have too many supervisors, or maybe you have not enough supervisors. You have too many people in this department, or you need more people. It's obvious in some of our departments, we're maybe understaffed. There may be some that we're overstaffed. We don't know that. And that's the intent of the review. They would come in and they would put that together. So the idea is, is what, I think the intent of the motion, the whole intent of this thing, is that the staff would have some voice into the future direction of where they're heading to. So however you want to craft that, that's why I put a staff review. But if you want to put a staff and organizational review, that's fine too. Or as long as they, the intent, that was the intent.
Okay. Yes, so, so what I'm saying is, is, is it's an organizational review because it's not up to us to, or anybody else really, to speak to staff and have them say what they're after. That's the CAO's job. It's up to whoever we hire for an organizational review to come in and say, you have this many staff here, this much work, this much staff here. Shift things around and move the organization, as opposed to pinpointing individual staff. That's, I think that piece is off the table. What are you thinking? Tell me. You're gonna have to weigh in.
Well, I guess, I mean, the motion is what for an organizational review. I mean, I guess you're leaving it to Jeff to determine what the, what the parameters are, I guess. Unless there's some direction given to him in the motion, what the parameters are, so.
So we're looking for the, yeah, so we're looking for the terms of reference. Maybe he brings back the terms of reference by, by the... Yep, before the end of the month. And, and we'll look at the terms of reference together and see if that's where we want to go. Is that fair? Is that, I want to know if that's the right way to, that's how to handle it? Okay, so do we all understand that? That, that we are, if we agree that we're going to just add the terms of reference into the motion, then the CAO will bring the terms of reference to us at the next committee of the whole. And we will sit down and look and then see if that's exactly what we're after. As opposed to discussing what we want to call it now. Okay? Okay, so I'm gonna give you each one more, although you spoke twice of it.
Linda, did you find the original motion that we... What was that motion, please? Because all we are doing is reaffirming that motion, because at that time, we had option one and option two.
Yeah, yeah.
And I believe we went for one.
Oh, no, that's not, that's not the one, no. It was, it was a motion after, so, sorry. The motion that she found was, was your original motion. Then I did a request for direction, I believe, as a result of that. And that's the motion I think you're looking for.
Yes.
Right, no.
And that's the one. While you're searching, I, if I'm getting you right, your worship, you do not want the staff to have a voice in this review?
It's not that I don't want to have staff to, I don't want staff to have a voice. It's that we have to make sure that we're not, yeah, certainly, that we're not, we're focused on the organizational change, as opposed to individual staff. This isn't about individual staff. CAO's gonna, did you want...
Yeah, so, so what I'd like to do, in, you know, because there have been different words around this from the original motion to tonight, is give you a draft terms of reference. I mentioned that the town of Digby has a terms of reference. Their situation was a little different than our situation. They had just gone into a CAO model from a clerk treasurer model. So they were evaluating where they were on that transition. They had just done a strategic planning exercise with their municipal advisor. They were evaluating where they were, or how they would, how they would implement those strategic goals, I guess, that they set. Our situation's a little different, so I'll take their terms of reference. I'll, I'll work with it. I'll send it out to you. We can discuss it and hopefully get consensus on the terms of reference before the March 31st date that's set in this motion.
So basically, it would read, the town council reaffirm its direction to staff to undertake an external staff review, or I'd call it what we want. And that the terms of reference, as opposed to the request for proposals, that the terms of reference be brought to council at the next committee of the whole.
Well, I think the intention of the motion was that the RFP would be issued by the end of March. And that was the intent of the motion. Now, if committee of the whole wants to reaffirm the, go for the proposal, I mean, we want to get the timeline right to get the things back. Because part of the motion was the March, the May meeting of council. So I, whether you, I don't know how you will do the timing. I'm still a little bit sidelined here when I realize that the staff will have no voice in this review, as individuals. Well, that's what you said, your worship, that you were, you were not in...
You asked me if that's what I said, and I said no.
So will the staff be able to speak to the external review team?
I'm sure the staff will be able to speak. But the difference between speaking to the organization as opposed to speaking to how they are as a staff is two different things.
So my point is, so the external review team comes in, they do the evaluation, and they go to Public Works hypothetically. They meet with the Public Works supervisor. Will he be able to tell the team that his people are dreadfully overworked, that they need more staff?
Absolutely.
And that maybe the morale is bad, and this is what they need. Are they able to say that, or...
Absolutely.
Will they be able to say that in private, or will there be people present?
Well...
And will there be like supervisors there, and this is my concern. I'd like people to be able to...
I know, but it's going right to the terms of reference. What I'm saying is, if you don't write the terms of reference, then you can't answer the question. CAO, go ahead.
Sorry. The terms of reference document will indicate the outcomes that we want. Their proposals will indicate their process. So you're hiring, the intent is clear, you want an external look. So if you're, if you're asking, would, would I or the supervisor supervisor be present when they're being interviewed? Well, that doesn't seem like it's gonna necessarily bring about the most honest and forthright answers. And if you want an external look at things, I think we've got to give people the opportunity to be thoughtful and honest and...
That's a, that's a...
But I expect that is what you would see in the proposal coming back, is here's how we would do it.
Yes.
We would interview, you know, all your staff, some of your staff, their timeline, and their process.
Because I'm just going from my education experience, when we have done these quote organizational reviews, everybody had an opportunity to speak, everybody had an opportunity to speak honestly, truthfully. And the idea was to come up with a better organization, and that's actually what emerged. Because people were able to feel that bit of the participation. So as long as that's in there, I'm happy with it. I won't be here at the next committee of the whole meeting, so, but I'll be definitely curious as to what hap... Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, so, so I just want to just make one thing clear, that, that the only thing I'm saying about this motion, I have no problem supporting it, but we have to do the terms of reference. Because you can't just say, do a review, because you know what? You may come back and say, well, gee, I thought they were able to talk to individuals, and they're not. We want to make sure that it's all written out, that we say, this is what we're after, okay? So that it's clear. You don't hire someone without doing that. Councillor McIsaac?
Yep, you got it right, yeah. Anyway, at a meeting, three or four months ago, we voted for options. Claire, Claire, there was one, Claire had, I think was number one, Digby was number two of terms of reference that you could go to, the people that they picked. I don't know. We had it, you had written it up, Jeff, you gave it to all the councillors to choose from. We picked option one, and we were gonna go with that, so we recommended option one. So we got a copy of that option one, is it, can we get a, you have it in the office? Okay, I was hoping you might have that here. I should have mentioned that to you. So option one, option one was, I think, the one Claire used, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, right. So is it possible to get a term of reference from, from what they used? I mean, and how they, how they done their, their review? I mean, you have it, so if that's, that's what we picked, that's what I expect that we would be going with, hopefully. I know maybe some people are not happy with option one. But I think option one would pretty well cover it, pretty well what we want. And it's there. So if you're looking for a term of reference, I would say, let's go with what we recommend, option one. Let's go with that. That'll speed things up. And like I said earlier, this is not a witch hunt. This is not to fire anybody or get rid of anybody. If anything, it's going to move us, and I hate to say this also, forward. If anything, it's going to move us, and I hate to say this also, forward quite a bit, so...
Do you guys have a problem with moving forward?
Yeah, well, I can't blame you, no, no, that and the open door one, that's all.
Okay. No, we already opened all the doors, there we go. Counselor Dennis?
In the Digby's one, they do show the roles, even as counselors, the roles and relationships among council, committees, boards, and agencies. And they review all staff positions, descriptions, and respect to completeness and identify improvements, determine if the current staff level is appropriate, so there's, they do all that.
Beautiful, yeah.
Oh, and assess the strategies for information and communication between the staff and the CAO.
Exactly, yeah. And that's why I said the Digby one is perfect.
Okay, so we're, so the CAO has that?
Yes, he does.
And, and all we're saying, this is not, nobody said anything about a witch hunter, a headhunter, anything. All I'm saying is, you can't, we're not gonna pay anybody from this table unless we're clearly defining what we're asking them to do.
Exactly.
Okay? Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. How does the motion read now, please?
Okay. So you're gonna have to work with me through this one, because the motion that Counselor Landry put for, excuse me, Counselor Landry put the, that forward, but how do we change it to the terms of reference be brought to council at the next committee of the whole? Do we vote that one down?
If, if I may, your worship, the motion could stand exactly the way it is, because you are still, unless there's a problem with the RFP process. The intention is to have the RFP issued by the 31st of March. What happens at committee of the whole will happen at committee of the whole, and committee of the whole is merely making a recommendation as to what the RFP will be, and therefore you can have a special meeting if you want at the end of the committee of the whole to ratify the terms of reference if you wish, but that is probably not necessary. This motion is simply reaffirming a previous motion and putting a timeline on it. And the whole thrust of this motion are the two dates, there, and the motion is not changing anything, and the wording we're having an issue with, because we're not sure what the wording of the original motion is, so we have to follow the wording of the first motion that was made four or five months ago. We, that is to be added in there, and then it's just the dates are the key issue. So it's just reaffirming that.
No, so, so what I'm saying is, from my perspective, I'm not prepared to vote for any, for, for the RFPs, because their RFPs get issued with the terms of reference. Is that not true? CAO? So if they do, we need some time to prepare the, the terms of reference, which means next committee of the whole, we get to look at them, because you'll have them prepared by then, and then we issue the RFP. So if we look at the terms of reference and we're fine with them, then we can have a quick council meeting and move forward, but if we're not, if we're not, then we need to make changes. So that March 31st date might stick and it might not. If we're okay with, with the terms of reference, it sticks.
And if it doesn't, you change it at that meeting.
Okay. CAO, sorry?
So all I was gonna say is, is you don't have to, with respect, micromanage the process. There are, there are a couple of dates already in the motion. You know, I'm suggesting to you that I would bring the terms of reference to you, rather than simply go ahead and make it up myself.
Yes.
So, you know, if, if you as, as council decide in that process that, that you want more time at any step, whether it is approving the, the recommendation in May, or if it's around issuing the RFP, that will be your choice. But there are two dates in the motion already that, that we'll work towards and, you know, with the intention of achieving them.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask for more? Call for the questions.
Okay. Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. One, Sandy, you're late, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Item two. Staff reviews. Counselor Landry.
This may be all moot, your worship. I did put in my original request, and when I sent this in for agenda, that I'm not sure if we have that already in place. And I did not get a response back from HR, and I didn't get a response back if that policy's there. So if that policy is in place, the motion is moot, it's not needed, but if it's not in place, then the motion is needed. So I'll defer to the CAO if that is indeed a policy.
I can answer that one. There is indeed a policy, and actually, I stand corrected, that the, the reviews have been sent out to all the directors and everyone to have them completed by the end of March. So it's this year, March 31st. Go ahead.
So in my thing, I put on my little submission to council, I said, I'm requesting that the Director of Human Resources provide counsel with the current policy in place regarding staff performance reviews and appraisals. Will we be able to get a copy of that, please? Okay, I'd like...
Or you can go online, it's right online, under Performance Policies.
Perfect. Thank you very much. That was my question. So we, I'd like to withdraw that motion, we don't need it.
Good.
I wish somebody had let me know that before. Anyway, thank you.
Okay. Compost facility. Counselor Landry. Yep, nope, take your time.
With me, your worship, I'm getting used to our new fantastic website. It doesn't click open as easily as the old days. It's now a download, it's a download, and you gotta do two things. Your worship, I have a, a motion in place that staff explore, I'd like to move that staff will explore the acquisition of the Alu bucket to be used on all compost materials prior to the screening process at our compost facility. That's my motion.
Okay. Can we have a second, or?
Second.
Because we're just looking at, at exploring.
It's an exploring motion. Your worship, in light of issues that we've had, the Alu bucket is used at a lot of facilities, and it's something that we might want to explore. Now, maybe we've explored it already, I don't know, I didn't get any feedback from, on this, this motion, but the bucket can screen, aerate, mix, separate, and feed loading, and load different materials in one step. It's an excellent tool, and apparently it goes into, it would go into existing equipment that we have, and I did give a, a website location. I thought it would be an exploration, it may be cost prohibitive, I don't know, but that was the motion, just that staff would explore it, and something maybe for this year or next year.
Good. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Questions been... Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, what I'd like to do with this, if, if you agree, we have engaged with Paul Arnold to assist us in reviewing our processes, our operating manual, operating processes at the compost facility, make recommendations with regard to processes and equipment. So I would like to refer this to, to him for his consideration, as, you know, we're looking for a comprehensive set of recommendations from him, and he could, if he's not already aware of this, he could do some investigation for us.
You sent a email...
Sorry?
You sent a email or whatever?
No.
Oh, the motion could stand as it is, but with the understanding that you'll be referring to Dr. Arnold, okay? So I'll call for the question.
Okay. Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And Lake George cleanup?
Yes, your worship, I just have a motion on this, that staff set us up priority, the preparation of estimates for the total cost of cleanup and remediation of the property currently owned by the town of Yarmouth at 2014 Lake George Road, and that staff have recommendations of the sources of funding, such as tax increases, et cetera, to pay for said costs.
Do we have a motion moved and seconded? Go ahead.
Just to speak to the motion, your worship, we've, we've already expended a sum of money. I'm still unsure if that money is gonna be coming out of water utility, or if it's coming out of the town, or it's a split affair, there are some questions there, and I, and I'm wondering, and this is for staff, primarily, we're into budget discussions at this point, where I know we've been bogged down with a lot of huge issues, and our staff is quite strained, as we've discussed earlier this evening, but we should be looking at how much the total costs are gonna be, and I think we have a ballpark figure in how we're going to work on this. So my suggestion is, is to start, I'm assuming we're doing this, and I just wanted to formalize it with a motion that at least this is happening, so obviously, it's gonna be a, I'm assuming, a capital item somehow, I'm not sure how that all fits into the process, I've not been involved with something like this before, so that's why the motion is there.
Thank you. CAO?
Yeah, so we are, we are looking at issues such as, you know, if and how much, if, if the water utility can participate in this, and if so, to what degree. We are looking at, and I think I may have shared some information on grant, grant programs that exist for, for cleanups. Unfortunately, this particular situation does not apply, does not fit the criteria. We've talked about insurance options. So, yeah, we are, we're looking at, at the financial side of this from, from different angles. The one, the one, of course, complicating factor at this point is, is that we're still in sort of the investigation phase, and so we don't actually know on the, on the case of the contamination, what we're dealing with. So going much further in terms of estimating cost is probably not gonna be able to happen until we know exactly what the source is, and what the recommended process is for, for remediation, and then, of course, through, through the engineers, we'll be able to come up with some sort of estimate, and tender process hopefully, you know, will give us that price before we, before we get into it.
Counselor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship. To CAO, I know we, every year in the water utility budget, we put money aside for property acquisition. Now, when we use money out of that fund, is that property owned by the water utility, or how does it, how do we divide that up? Because there's a property at 2014 Lake George, is that owned by the town? Even though it's, even though they're the same residents of the town of Yarmouth own the property, but is it owned by the water utility, is it owned by the town of Yarmouth?
CAO?
Okay, so the deed in this case is in the, in the town of Yarmouth, as is all of the properties that we have acquired in the watershed. They're, they're all in the name of the town of Yarmouth, to my knowledge, okay? The, the acquisition, obviously, the, the reason for getting involved in this property was around protection of the watershed, which was an interest of the water utility, for sure, and the water utility did participate in some of the costs associated with the acquisition originally. I can't say for certain if they paid all of the acquisition costs, that we haven't been able to, to finalize yet. I think the, the line item that you're talking about, the, the property acquisition, I think that was a line that was actually in the town's capital, as opposed to the water utility. The water utility does have lines for, for capital reserve, and there is a depreciation fund as well that gets put back in the capital. And not that they can't acquire property, but I, I think the line that you're speaking of, in my mind at least, was in, was in the town of Yarmouth. So the, we're, we're trying to determine if, in fact, the water utility paid for the property, paid the actual acquisition cost, according to our consultants Gates and Eisner, or, no.
You're right.
Yeah, it's not Gates anymore, but Eisner. You know, that will be an important factor in, in whether or not the utility and review board would allow the costs for, for some or all of this issue to be dealt with by the utility.
Good? Okay, questions been called?
I'm a little very interested in this, is that correct? I don't understand it.
Yeah, yeah. Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. For Municipal Government Act. So I'm just looking for someone to make this motion, that a date be set for council to review the recommendations put forth by the Department of Municipal Affairs with regard to, to the MGA review, and that council send our comments and positions to Municipal Affairs before June 30th.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. So, so basically, I don't know, did I send you all a copy of that? Did y'all receive a copy of that? And, and Linda will send it out closer to the date, and we just need to send in our, our comments. So any more discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. New business appointment of returning officer.
Your worship, I, I'd like to talk about the cleanup of 214 Lake George, do you have a minute?
You can have, you can have...
Whatever.
Well, no, you can have one minute right now, we just passed that, so we don't usually go backwards, but if you want to come up and...
You're gonna ask us if we've got anything that we want to say on this?
No. You want to come up for...
You know, just sitting here, and I don't mean to be rude, but it's awful mind-bonding when council goes on like this with, with Counselor Landry and the, to go back and do a staff review, and, and it doesn't, it doesn't get done, and then we have this problem that happened at Lake George, and it's gonna be put on the taxpayers of the town of Yarmouth that probably pay for this cleanup, and we probably spent $94,000, and between $50,000 and $60,000 now, I would think, and we haven't moved one thing off that facility. We really haven't done our due diligence to the people that are out there, and when I say that, I'm talking about Adam. We haven't put up any snow fences to stop the garbage blowing in the woods, or anything like that, so when it comes to the cleanup, and the department environment gets involved in this, it's even gonna be more expensive. We don't know if his well is gonna, it's good right now on this test, but we don't know beyond the shadow of a doubt that it's not gonna be good next week without testing, and yet we don't take the time, and the water is the cheapest thing, until we get this all sorted out with what's going on with the people out there. It, it just, it kind of blows my mind, and I'm not trying to headhunt here for anybody, for anybody, and I must, I, I disagree with some of them, me and Jeff, the CAO have had disagreements in the past, but this has got nothing, nothing to do with this. My main concern is on the watershed, is the water gonna come good to the town, or in the future, which we don't know yet, because we haven't, as you say, put the professionals, we're gonna do what the professionals are gonna say. We haven't got to that point yet, but we do know that these people are immediately impacted right now, and I don't think we're taking their best things in interest here. And we sit and argue like this, I mean, it's like watching a circus at times. You know, this, this is a, a serious thing, and then weighing on an apology, if you get back to doing your staff reviews, definitely mistakes were, were made, but it's still all gonna come back to the taxpayer of this town to bear this load on what's went down. I, I can't see the argument on, on, on doing a staff review, and I'll, I'll question your staff review that you do, because I talked to some of the people that work for the town, and they say they write up their own reviews and hand them in. Any, any job that I've worked on as a supervisor, I did my own staff reviews on the people, did them, then I brought them into my office and talked to them and say, do you agree with this, or you've got anything that you want to put in there, or add, or whatever? And I put what they, they have to say in their defense, or whatever, if they didn't agree with me, I put it on the review, and then I handed it in to my supervisor. And I didn't have any of my supervisors there when, when I did it. These men worked directly under me, answered to me, and I was responsible and accountable for their actions. So I don't see what the issue is here, and I, I think that ought to get done ASAP, so we can get to what we need to do out there and get where we're at. We haven't done a thing for those people. Nothing. You know? We, we, we haven't put up a snow fence, we haven't done anything. We haven't done the garbage blowing over Adams Lawn, we put a, I guess you put a water filter in at somebody's, the, the pregnant lady's house, I don't, I don't know all the people's names, and that, that was probably the right thing to do, you know? Right off the get-go. I mean, if you've got something to say and think I'm wrong, well, let's hear it.
Counselor Dawes?
I'm, I'm sorry, your worship, I had my, my light on to, to make the motion, that you, that you requested about the reappointment of the returning officer, and we were interrupted, so I'm sorry, I'll turn my, my light off.
Yeah, we'll get to that in a second.
I just thought you, she might want to, want to say something.
We're good. Nope.
I mean, you know, you, you talk to the people, and we go, we go into this, and we put a lot of work into this, and do I think that the town of Yarmouth is, is totally in the fault here? Yes, on some things. I, I think the municipality, there was mistakes made there for when the mill, mill was put in, they voted on it, they made the line to the lake, everything, the mill went in. I think the government's a bit wrong here for letting them put the womanized thing in there and run into the lake. I think the department environment is wrong for not doing any checks on it. But then we get back to the town of Yarmouth, we bought that land, and we made mistakes that the land wasn't clean, but we didn't know about that, and it gets through the ranks. Then we go and put all this garbage out there, and that's what I was concerned about, and Then we go and put all this garbage out there, and that's what I was concerned about, and that's why I brought it up, and that's why I brought the councillors out. We took a look at that, and now we find out another problem, and then you don't want to have an audit? I mean, where does the mistake end? Where did it begin, and where does it end?
First of all, nobody said we didn't want to have an audit. What we're saying is, you can't just hire a firm, and nobody's going to hire, nobody's going to say, "Let's do some well drilling." That's your business. And just leave it at that. You need some terms of reference. You need to know where, who's doing it, how's it going to be done? So you do the terms of reference.
I understand that.
Nothing's changed, the timeframe's done, we're doing, we're doing the review, it's happening. So that's, so that's not the case with this.
Your worship.
Yes, sir.
That has happened from when they made the motion way back when, and we're still at the point where you haven't got it done.
Yeah.
Maybe if it would have got done, this never would have happened. Or maybe there's problems that people are overworked, and I don't, I still don't blame everything on the C A O when you guys in council act like this. You can't blame him for everything. You know, you've got to weigh the scales of justice and have some stuff balanced here. But this, we've still got this problem, and it still falls back on the taxpayer of this town, and it's going to be a big bill.
And we realize that. We realize that. But we're doing what we can to fix it. Like, we're doing what we can to fix it. We've got the, I understand you can't even move anything out there because it's so heavy right now, it's wet, it's soaking. What are you going to do?
Call Ghostbusters, I guess.
And it, well, no, and it goes on us, and fairly, we're not the experts, and our people don't like to hear us say that all the time, but we have to rely on what the experts say. And we want to move it safely, we want to move it as quickly as possible, we've all agreed with that around the table. We're going to do as quickly as we can, and as well as we can.
Well, in all fairness, your worship, that was put there in September. It was called by the people out there, did not bring it there, and everything else, it never got done. I brought it up in January, here we are in March. So let's pick a year, 2018, we're going to, we're going to clean it up? You know, what's going on? Really? That's, I mean, that's the way we're looking at it.
Yeah, and I understand that.
But the stuff is still running down to the lake. It's still going to the lake, it's been going there for 15 years.
So we have people looking at that, don't we? Yeah, so they're looking at that. They just have to come back with some information so we can go forward. Simple as, it is as simple as that. We can't just go out there, start doing stuff on our own.
I don't think it's as simple as that, and I think with global, my experience in cleaning up anything like that, you think the $94,000 bill is a big bill. You just wait till they get, that's just the first round of what we're going to get. And I think the C A O knows this. This bill could go well over a million bucks, Pam. You're talking about a serious, serious thing here when the environment gets involved in everything else. This is no joke. You know, this could bankrupt the town.
So wait a second. Okay, all right, go ahead.
Your worship, with all due respect to Mr. Horton's comments, I'm personally impressed on how fast we have moved on this. I mean, we have inherited a situation out there from 2005. We're dealing with regulations that were in place in 2005. This is 2016, 11 years later, and things have changed. We had no idea what's there since we were first taken out there at the end of January. If you do a calendar check, it's been five to six weeks. In that five to six weeks, we have brought in consultants, we've had public meetings. We have been advised by the experts, and I can be corrected by the C A O and the mayor, that we should not be disturbing anything until they know exactly what's going on on that property. We are moving in drilling machines next week. We put an RFP out on all of the testing. I mean, we've done testings of people's wells, we've remediated the situation for one particular family that was affected. Environment has been called in. You know, to say that we haven't done anything, I think for a small town with a limited staff, we've done pretty darn well, and I'm very proud on how we've reacted to what is. There's no question, there's no denying, it's a serious issue. But we just can't steamroll in there with backhoes and shovels and start removing stuff because we don't know what's underneath that soil, and that's why we're into the drilling, this $94,000 project right now, to find out what is down there. We don't know, you don't know, the residents don't know, and I'm going to be very honest with you.
That's a fierce statement.
Yeah, pardon?
That's a fierce statement.
And honestly, there's a lot of people who do know what's there, but aren't talking. And that's giving the real issue, and until people, somebody out there worked at that mill, until we start being able to find out exactly what was going on there, and I'm hoping that when the environment people, or when the experts are out there, somebody will come forth and say, "Yeah, this is what's been happening." That will save us a lot of time. But right now, up until now, we've been guessing at this, we've been guessing at that, because when we ask questions, we do not get answers. We are expected to give answers, but there's a lot of unanswered questions that we don't know. That mill was taken down in 2005, Mr. Horton, and I wasn't at the table at the time, and nobody around this room was at the table at the time. We're a different realm, and in 2005, there was a change of regulations. Now it's a different ballgame. So give us time to work with the experts. We're working very quickly, and I believe, C A O, after the drilling, correct me, how long, I think, wasn't there a timeline on that report so that we can move in a very timely fashion? I think you fast-tracked that quite quickly.
Excuse me, the test results from the lab take seven to 10 days to get back. And so, you know, Englobe has been working very quickly for us, they've been focused on this for us, and, you know, we'll have, once they're done, you know, there, next week, we'll, stuff goes to the lab, a week or 10 days later, they get the results, they make the recommendations to us, and we go on to the next step. It's, I can empathize, I know it's frustrating, and, you know, you'd like to see more done. You know, Environment, you know, we're in regular communication with them, we're in regular communication with them, because, you know, we don't want to shirk responsibility or anything here, and frankly, they've been, they've been quite responsive to us. You know, they have, you know, advised us basically that we need to designate an environmental professional, who, we're asking Ms. Cole if she would be that person. We have 90 days to name that person. You know, and so we're not waiting, we're moving as quickly as we can.
Well, your worship and Councilor Langel, I can appreciate what you're saying up to a point. And I can't make these scales balance in justice, but this should have never happened. The land shouldn't have been bought like that, and this shouldn't have been put out there. And when you say, with the staff review and everything going on, what you're talking about, to have an apology from the C A O, and I'm sure, you know, he feels it in his heart, but how does it happen? And your worship, you're in cahoots here too, because you're the mayor, you talk to the C A O, you know what's going, supposed to know what's going on in the town. So there should have been a meeting with the town engineer, the guy who scouted it at the landfill site. He's the compost man, supposed to know everything about compost, and you even said that this was Class B compost, that it was the great stuff, but we proved that it's garbage. 300 truckloads with tandem loads leaving that facility, he's the man that's the specialist on compost, and you mean to tell me he didn't shut that down for going over on the watershed? You know, like, the scales don't balance, and I'm not trying to start a war with you here, but if I could make them balance in my own mind, I could live with your decisions and what you're doing, but I can't, and I won't. And I don't think anybody from the town of Yarmouth should. And I'm glad it's an election year. I'll tell you that. Thank you for your time, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. I'd like to speak, please. Yeah, you can have five minutes, and, no, it's not a public participation, but we're going to allow her, unless everybody else tells me...
Just questions. One thing, actually, that you just said, you said a few minutes ago that no one around this table knew about this. I would beg to differ. I would say that Guxu and Mr. Barrow knew about this, back when this was purchased.
Did you know about that?
Yeah. But I mean, in this table, you talked about around this table. Okay? So I did a FOIPop from Environment. This is just some of what I got from them. Been researching it, and making phone calls, talking to people, doing more research, and some things came very clear. One is, the town knew exactly what it was buying. It purchased the property on the 12th of July '05, and on the 18th of July '05, it was taking a walk, and it just says Town of Yarmouth, so I don't know specifically who. But people from Town of Yarmouth were taking a walk with Environment around the property, and there's pictures that Environment took to show town the spills. They call them staining, okay? That big dip tank was still there, it was still full. There was two other tanks above ground that were still full. I happen to know that five summary offense tickets were given to town, and I know that there was a court case, Crown Attorney Prosecutor for Environment, and that there were five lawyers present, okay? I know that there was a plea bargain, and that it was April 4th, 2006, okay? Now, I've shared this with councillors, and so far, I've got nothing. But I have the test results from when the town bought it, from a company named Maxim, who tested the water, and the water came back dirty. They actually used the word "dirty." Things that were found were aluminum, boron, which is like Borax. PQ8 was found in a big, huge pile, or I guess spill, right where the dip tank was, and I have photographs of it. I also have the Phase 2, where they actually showed, and they drew a picture of where the spill was. And then they also have a picture of where it's saying, going towards the watershed. So, you know, the last time my husband spoke, he talked about a cover-up and using the compost to cover something up, that perhaps there was a skeleton buried there. Well, I think he used the wrong thing to cover it up, because what it did was draw attention to it. And so, the people who knew, know who they are. I have it all right here. I have photographs. Anything anybody wants to see, I have it, okay? I'm not saying that Environment wasn't complicitous, because they should never have given approval for a dip tank with the PQ8, which was banned in the States. It should have never been approved near a water, potable water source. And a matter of fact, on the prop, on the actual PQ8 MSDS data sheet, it says not to be used near residents or homes, and not to be used near water sources. So Environment gave them a permit, for an industrial permit, which I thought was strange, because why would you put "industrial" on a residential? Or I think what it was zoned was resource is the zoning. So I think that this is a much bigger, I guess the word is conspiracy. And there was many people involved, many companies, it's not just town, it's not just Environment. There was some other bigger players, and the sick thing, though, is that this is being now thrust upon the taxpayers, and we're having to pay for the town not cleaning up and finishing a cleanup that was in progress. You bought it, you knew what you were buying, and you didn't clean it up. Shame on you.
Okay. Appointment? Did you light, did you? You good? Okay. Appointment of returning officer, is that what you were going with? Go ahead.
Three's a lucky number, I just put my light on for the third time.
So is that Maria Kinsibie, appointed returning officer for the Town of Yarmouth for 2016 municipal election?
That's the one, I make that motion, please. Thank you.
So moved, seconded, discussion?
Question.
Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Smoke-free bylaw draft, is there any possible way we can either throw it out or move it somewhere? We don't need to sit here and discuss that tonight, we need to be able to...
If, your worship, if it isn't yet in the form that meets your favor, you could refer it, you could refer it back to staff with direction, or you could simply refer it to Committee of the Whole for further discussion, and give staff direction from there, whatever is your pleasure.
I have to say, I love your diplomatic words. Pretty good for, go ahead, Counselor.
Your worship, I've received some citizens' concerns, as a number of you have around this table, and there's all kinds of comments. I'd like to make a motion that we refer this proposed draft back to study for, back to staff for further review and for recommendations at a later date. And I realize there's a lot on the plate of staff, so, you know, staff can...
No panic.
No, there's no great urgency on this, because I think the people who are smokers aren't going to quite give it up tomorrow. Before November would be nice.
Counselor Dawes?
Yeah.
Sorry. It's never going to work, not until next term. Okay? Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Amendment to destruction by fire policy. C A O?
So, your worship, we brought this policy in a few years ago. It was to allow us to make, or allow citizens, I guess, to ask for reassessments in the case where their property was destroyed by fire typically, or some other cause not at their hand. It has come to our attention, though, however, that some people actually wish to take their own buildings down, and in doing so, would like to be able to apply for a reassessment on that basis. As staff, we've thought about it, looked at it, and said, "Well, we really don't see a downside if somebody's going to look after a building that is a tear-down with their own money and resources. Perhaps the least we could do is allow for a reassessment." So it might actually remove a barrier to people dealing with derelict buildings.
Okay, Counselor Mooney?
Yeah. Good. Actually, I wish, actually, I wish Garni hadn't left, because that was one of the questions that his brother Mark had when he purchased the property on Alma Street.
Yeah.
There was concern there with the assessment and what the property was worth and what he had to do with it. So, like you said, to the C A O, there's no downside to this one, and it's only for the betterment of the community.
Good.
Do we need a motion for that, or are we going to...
Counselor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. I only have one question to Jeff, and that is on, we have some properties that has been damaged by fire, and I don't know if these people are requesting, any of these people requesting reduction in their property taxes, and they're down by South End Playground, I can think two down there, that had the windows and everything all boarded up. And, but they've been boarded up for a number of years now. The damage has been for the last two or three years. So how does that work? Can they leave it indefinitely at that stage and collect tax reduction without fixing them up?
C A O?
Okay, complex question. So this particular policy is about destroying, you know...
Destroyed by fire.
The building's gone, right? So then, if you paid your taxes last month, your building burns down, you're going to, your taxes that you've paid are for this year, and yet the building doesn't exist. So you can apply to us and have your taxes reduced, your assessment reduced, and some money refunded. And what you're talking about is a building that has had a fire, that has been, you know, boarded up to keep it, to keep it safe, I guess, but no work is going on to improve it?
That's right.
Yeah, so that would be more of a dangerous, unsightly issue.
Yeah. But I just read the top line, I read it all. There's, you know, four or five paragraphs here. The top one is this policy entitled, "The Reduction of Current Property Taxes for Property Damaged by Fire or Storms Policy." So there's probably more into the policy than what I'm reading here.
Destroyed, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so what are you looking for, C A O?
Motion to...
Okay. Moved and seconded, any more discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Draft idling bylaw. C A O?
Your worship, at a previous meeting, it was, I was reminded, in fact, that a motion of council had been passed quite some time ago about an idling bylaw for the town of Yarmouth. We did a little bit of looking, and Town of Woolfield had an idling bylaw, and so what we did is we changed the names to protect the innocent, and we have proposed the very same bylaw for your consideration.
Good, thank you. Counselor Langel?
Your worship, I think it's in order to move this to go to first reading, I think, is that the next step? So I'd like to make a motion that the proposed bylaw for idling control for the Town of Yarmouth move to first reading.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Reports, no, it's just the proper procedures to put your light on to make a motion, and Counselor Dawes has had her light on a number of times. No, no, it's, no, it's, it just gets in the, it's just in the, no, that's not how it is. It's just in the process of speaking, people make motions, and that's, that's fine as well. So reports on workshops, conferences, would anybody like to speak to that before Counselor Dawes puts her light on? Go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, this is everyone's last chance. Oh, pardon me. This motion that I'm bringing forth is to enable a broader information sharing platform beyond individual Facebook postings and streamed council meetings from all of us around the table that attend workshops and conferences and share, share what we've learned and what we'd like to bring back, back to council, what would work for the town. And I therefore make the motion that staff be directed to look into including a place on the town's new website for council to submit reports on workshops and conferences we'd like to bring back, back to council, what would work for, for the town. And I therefore make the motion that staff be directed to look into including a place on the town's new website for council to submit reports on workshops and conferences attended.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, discussion?
Question.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary?
Aye.
Seriously? Now I gotta take a vote? I gotta take a count?
This is for the...
No, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I can't, I can't, I just have to take a count. Okay. Who was for? Okay. Three against, okay, good. Motion carried. Good. But, yeah.
We speak to, we speak to that just for a minute?
No.
Okay, good.
No. Well, Council Advisory Committees, Committee of the Whole, Deputy Mayor. Go ahead.
Number one, I move that the recommendation for birchage rates for Kilimanjaro's more from Maria has brought forward by staff be accepted.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to do a second count of traffic flow at the corner of Brunswick Street and Sturrs Road.
Seconded. Moved and seconded?
Question?
Questions been called?
Question?
No, we already called the question, just wait and see who's paying attention. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the grants allocated to various organizations be approved.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the matter of the Town of Yarmouth incorporating tiny home regulations through the land use bylaw and the municipal planning strategy be referred to the Planning Advisory Committee.
I love this one.
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the request from the Yarmouth Hospital Foundation for the Town of Yarmouth to be a table sponsor at their spring gala be received and placed on file.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the request for four basketball backboards and rims located in the old Yarmouth High School gymnasium from the Maple Grove Education Center be accepted.
Good. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that $150 be provided to the Town of Clerks Harbor in recognition of the 50th anniversary of the Canadian Coast Guard Rescue Boat 101.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that CAO, in conjunction with other CAOs of the two other municipal units, look at putting together a showcase of particular success stories related to economic development in the UNSM Workshop Planning Committee.
Before we say that, I just had my meeting this afternoon, and that date has passed. We picked our, we missed the date. So my fault for not really, you know, but, but, but we have decided as a committee that we will do that at other upcoming workshops, so we'll have another opportunity.
So, do we second that?
Well, we just...
Second the motion, let it go?
Yeah, well, we can pass it. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Go ahead.
I move, I move that the responses to the broadband survey questions by the Economic Development Officer be submitted.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the request for a presentation by the Clean Ocean Action Committee be approved to be made to the Committee of the Whole on the 24th of March, 2016.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the request from YASTA to reallocate funds for the Music Week 2017 Canadian Mix Curling Championships be denied.
It's been withdrawn from YASTA?
It has been withdrawn, yes.
Yeah.
So do we need this motion?
Do we address this?
Motion.
Yep.
I think we should have the motion because our intent was there.
Yep, good, okay. Moved, and can I have a second there?
Seconded.
Seconded, any discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that Staff Sergeant Michelle Lurquah be appointed interim traffic authority.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to look into acquiring funds for the climate change initiative set forth by our federal government.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
The last one, Your Worship, I move that the Town of Yarmouth send heartfelt congratulations to Barbara Webster and Craig LeBlanc on their Volunteer of the Year awards.
Excellent. Moved and seconded, questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. We just had someone from the Town of Kentville join us. Welcome, Counselor. Welcome, Counselor. You can go, you can go back and tell Mayor Corkum how it's done.
You certainly may.
Who is, Your Worship?
You got one minute, make it quick.
Coming, coming from the third floor of the Rhodes Hotel, I told my wife, I've gotta get down the chambers. I had to make sure that some of your members were very fully engaged and awake. As the creator with my team in Kentville of the first idling control bylaw in Atlantic Canada, I was pleased to see that, that initiative's coming here to Yarmouth, so, good on you.
Yep. Thank you.
The key thing with our program was education, then legislation, to get the buy-in from the citizens on that issue, so, that'd be my comment on that.
And we do that.
Rolling out peace.
Exactly. Thank you for stopping by. Welcome.
Carry on.
Okay, so, Citizen Advisory Committees, Heritage, do you have something, Counselor?
Yeah, it's not really yet from the Heritage Advisory. Your Worship, I circulated to council, and it's on the agenda, an email received from Charles Jess regarding Eddie, the late Eddie Cutro of ENJ Millworks. And Mr. Cutro is well-known to people in heritage restoration in the Town of Yarmouth, and his mill has produced a lot of unique pieces of architecture for many of the houses in this community. And I'd like to make a motion that the Heritage Advisory Committee be directed to look into some form of recognition for Eddie Cutro and ENJ Millworks for his dedication and his love of the heritage of our town.
Okay, so that goes to Heritage, right? Okay? Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Reports for information? We good, anything there? And questions for committee chairs, anybody? Go ahead.
Yes, Your Worship, not to blindside my colleague to my right, but I was at the supper table tonight reading the Chronicle Herald. And the Chronicle Herald, which I'm a day behind, puts out on a regular basis a publication called The South Shore Breaker. I'll be very honest, Bridgewater is kicking our rear in that publication. Really bad. And I mean, they are really doing good, and right now, as we know, the Chronicle Herald is in the middle of a major strike. They do not have newsroom staff. They are basically publishing verbatim press releases, because you can tell when you read the publication. Being a journalist, I sympathize with my colleagues on the picket line. However, I'm also a mercenary, and I don't know what we can do, but I'm going to Counselor Dennis, is there any way, Counselor, you could talk to YASTA to somehow look, is there some way they can take advantage of this, this timeline while this is happening to really start promoting Yarmouth more? There's one ad from Rudders, which I saw in the publication today, but it's, there's very little of events happening in Yarmouth in the Chronicle, yet I'm, I'm looking at bake sales happening in Queens County and in Digby, et cetera. People, we really should be looking at that publication because I know YASTA's doing a wonderful job in promoting us in Boston, and Toronto, and in New York, and everywhere else. But we also want to bring people in from other parts of Nova Scotia and Atlantic Canada. And the other thing we want people to know is that Yarmouth right now is a thriving hub, that there is a lot of things happening in Yarmouth, and we get some pretty good stores here. With all due respect to Bridgewater, which is a lovely community, which I fully support, I'd like to get some business down here, so I'd like to ask Counselor Dennis if she would be so kind to go back to YASTA as her representative and say, hey, guys, anything we can do to help, or if you need some assistance from us, or whatever, to make this happen. But from what I've been told, some towns are taking advantage of the situation, and we need to do that too, Your Worship.
So I just did three stories with The South Shore Breaker, just in the last month. So we're, we're there. I think one of the last ones was the big, the big piece on our facade program. So it's there. So if you go to YASTA, and, and I'll give you the contact for the, for the, for the reporter, then I've got a list of, I've got a list of stories they can do. That's an easy call. You talking about Show Shore Breaker, or The Chronicle? Or both? Okay. All right, so we'll do that. Counselor Dennis?
Okay, I will bring that to YASTA's attention.
Okay, good.
Some of them are away right now because they've been to the AAA Travel Show in Quebec, and so they're kinda traveling, but I will.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Additions? Army cadets? Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I received a call from Donnie McCumber, and Donnie McCumber's, he's with the organization of the 110th Army Cadets in Yarmouth. He'd like to give a, at the Committee of the Whole, the next Committee of the Whole, I think it's on the 20, 22nd. Am I, must, is that...
No, we just, we talked to Mr. McCumber, too. Did you set something up with him?
Anyway...
Yeah, it's not...
Anyway, can I, I'll read this. I've talked to Mr. McCumber. He hadn't heard anything back. I suggested the Committee of the Whole, I'm only telling, I'm only saying what he said.
Yeah, no.
Don't shoot the messenger.
No, I'm not shooting the messenger.
Anyway, so he, he would like to have, to be able to give his, his cadets a give a presentation on the March Committee of the Whole, which is March the 22nd. And the purpose of the, of the, to give it, the presentation, the, the Army Cadets is, they want to present members of council with a Battle of the Vimy Ridge Memorial Pin. And he, he wants to set dates for, in May, so he could be distributing these in, in town and around different areas. The cadets will be distributing them throughout the town area to raise funds to send cadets to Vimy Ridge for the 100th anniversary in 2017. So he had wanted to schedule this for April, but April's not a good time for him to do it. So he wants...
So they had already, I think they had already scheduled it for April.
Yeah, but...
Because March, we have two already.
Yeah, well, anyway, so he wants to do it for, for the Committee of the Whole on the 22nd, because the campaign will be already going on, there should be no reason why. It's only just a small, small presentation to give counselors, and that's it for the Committee of the Whole.
So he can't, okay, okay, so, so how about this? Can we leave it with Linda to speak with them? Because we might have a mix-up, because you told, you did speak with them, and he said, we thought April would be okay.
Yeah, I, I spoke to him, I spoke to him...
Just recently?
Yeah, this, this morning, this afternoon, and tonight, he sent me the email. So he wants to go with the 22nd. I have the, here, it says, anyway, he, he had it for April, but April's not what he wants to do now. He wants to do it at March the 22nd.
24th, yeah, okay.
Yeah, 24th, Committee of the Whole. So is that permissible for him to do that?
I guess we have to vote.
I, I make a motion that we, that we do that.
We do three?
Question?
Huh? We're only supposed to do one, according to, we have...
Well, you know what? We're supposed to, we're supposed to have not so many people come up and talk when we're not giving a public participation, but we do.
No, actually, I can give permission for anybody to speak.
No, you have to ask, you have to ask the councils to do that. If you, if you look back.
It's true.